Madam Clerk.
This is the pre-meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, September fourteenth. We have approval of minutes from September the seventh.
It's your microphone, okay?
Okay, we're good. The minutes, have we all set?
Yes. Okay. Appeals, we have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance on September twenty-fifth, from one PM until ten PM on Virginia Street. September twenty-fifth, from four to ten, on Silverwood. And September twenty-fifth, from seven-thirty to eight-thirty, on Wildwood Place. What district is that? Wildwood Place. Public hearings. Today is the public hearing to rezone property located at twenty-eight-twenty Spring Hill Avenue, north side of Spring Hill Avenue, extending from Burton Avenue to Hosvelt Lane. Hosvelt, yeah. From B-two and B-three to B-three. Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Michelle Strather, and this is, um, a corrosion, erosion, I'm sorry, erosion, issues on her property.
The same data, yes. Right.
And Reggie Hill, he wants to address the council regarding twenty-one-seven-thirty-five Azalea City Golf Course. On the, under appeals, he wants to address the Gulf Coast Challenge. Ordinance sixty-four-zero-two-six, zoning code of UDC, zero-three-five-eight-four, Mobile Municipal Court, zero-two-zero-three-three, organizational chart, thirty-one-seven-six-seven, ARP, zero-nine-seven-three-four, the budget, twenty-seven-seven-seven-two, Mobile Municipal Election Protocol.
Madam Clerk?
Yeah, right.
Could we go back to the appeal where it says the request of Nathan Park at twenty-one-twenty-five, Wildwood Place? Exactly where is that?
Um, District Five.
I think it's in District Five.
Oh, District, okay.
Six?
I think it's in Four. I don't know.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Is it in, is it in Five?
I don't recognize it.
Hold on.
Unless it's out there off of Cottage Hill.
Yeah.
It is at, um, Cottage Hill in Oldwood, on the northeast side.
I think it's Four.
That's Four.
I think that's Four.
If it, if it not, if it was Four.
That's Four.
Right?
It's right on here.
Yeah.
Okay, are you good, John?
They're only gonna be noisy for an hour.
The fours have it.
About the AMs and the PMs and stuff.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ordinance is held over, sixty-four-zero-two-six, ordinance to amend and restate Chapter sixty-four of the city zoning code.
We're having a commentary from the council.
We can await to the...
Uh, I was gonna suggest we hold this over one week. See where we are after one week.
Well, we meet, we have a, we have a meeting that's...
Coming up.
...place on the twenty...
Eight.
Twenty-eight. Lavon selected that day, or else?
Yeah, that was the date that the council and the, um, the staff could, um, our council now, yeah, could meet, which was the twenty-eighth.
It's still in the same motion, uh, and you can still have that meeting.
But...
It doesn't interfere or stop us from, or take away anything away from that meeting.
Well, that's if we, if we wanna make some changes from the proposal because of the advertising of it.
Well, we're just holding it...
The time to do it is so that it doesn't have to be read advertised twice.
We're just holding it over. We're just talking about, we're just talking about holding it over one week.
Yeah. Yeah, my suggestion would be just to go ahead and hold over for one week, and council, if there's any questions that you have towards it, go ahead and try to direct it towards the administration between now, you know, and, you know, for the, you know, the next week, you know, to come. And if there's additional questions after that, you know, then we'll see where we at on next week and everything.
I agree with Vice President.
But the council hired Ms. Cochran to advise us on municipal codes and whatnot for planning principles, and she made a report and recommended some changes. And the administration appeared to be looking at those changes and, and perhaps incorporating them so that when you advertise, like I said, you advertise one time for the public hearing. And if we're not having this meeting between the two parties again, where we can come to what will be advertised, how are, how are we helping this? We're expediting something that we're not finished with yet for advertising.
I guess I might want to say...
Ms. Pico.
Good morning, Council Vice President Small and to other members of the council.
I'm sorry?
Not me.
This morning, we would like to come to you requesting that we call for a public hearing. Since presenting the final draft to you back on May eighteenth, it's been on your agenda multiple times over the last month. At your direction, we've had subcommittee meetings of the whole, and as requested, planning staff has participated in three work sess, work sessions with your legal counsel for the UDC. Based on the city council's feedback, at the July twenty-second meeting, staff has worked to diligently address the council's concerns regarding zoning district definitions, mapping, and, and other items. A red line version of these modifications is forthcoming, as well as a summary of those changes. In the three meetings between staff and the UDC attorney, we have had broad, yet undefined discussions, but have not received any concrete proposals and no feedback from the proposed edits and red line submissions that we've, we've submitted thus far. In discussing our request for the call for public hearing, we believe that we, it allows for sufficient time for you to digest any edits. The proposed timeline would follow legal requirements for the public hearing and advertising process, and there as follows. Assuming that you'd call for a public hearing today, that would allow for two weeks to make any edits or changes, and it would also allow for us ample time to advertise for the three consecutive weeks, moving forward with a public hearing on the nineteenth, and then hopefully a vote on the twenty-sixth. The, the third subcommittee meeting is certainly welcomed and encouraged, and at that time, we will be available to discuss any proposed changes, and hopefully would allow us time to make those changes to meet our advertising guidelines. So we're asking today for you to call for the public hearing for the nineteenth on this UDC, and we'd be glad to meet with you between now and the twentieth to make any modifications or edits based on any comments received.
I'd like to ask our attorney, I'm sorry, Ms. Rich, are you finished?
I'm not sure I understand what date because before they, when you say the nineteenth, you talk about October?
Yes.
And then that's could be the call for the public hearing? That's what you're asking us to do today?
I'm asking that you consider for the call for public hearing no later than the nineteen, the nineteenth, October nineteenth.
That we call for a public hearing on October nineteenth?
I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. The, the public hearing would occur on October nineteenth.
Correct.
We call for it today.
And you have a red line to make changes to what was proposed already?
We have, we have, um, a, a red line that was submitted to, um, in part to the UDC attorney. However, we will, with, have made some additional changes and will be ready and prepared to send those red line changes to you with a summary that outlines what those modifications are based on.
Last day, and we haven't seen any of that, and we haven't had any discussions with our attorney. That was the whole idea of the next meeting.
Well, I'm asking for you to move forward with the process to allow for you sufficient time, we believe, between now and the time that it needs to be advertised, so that you see what we're proposing, you can react to it, and make modifications based on that timeline. We believe that there's sufficient time to allow us to do that, based on what we've heard from this city council.
I'd like our attorney to speak.
Chris, I have a question. If we just say, just hold this over to next week, and then we start the legal advertising, and we have a committee meeting on, um, September the twenty-eighth, and there is a major change, we had to turn it back around and re-advertise, correct? So my thought process with that is, you know, maybe that we start the advertisement on that day, or either the next day, or not that day, and probably just go ahead and have council meeting, recess, and meet with our attorney. And there's, um, you know, nothing, everything's good, everybody have all the questions, answers. It's pretty much just keep going forth and recess, and come back to council meeting, and continue with the council meeting. If not, maybe we have to have a special council meeting that Thursday, or that Wednesday to try to go ahead and call for a public hearing. I mean, how, I mean, how do the council feel about that?
I think it's a good idea.
I mean, that can be done, Chris?
I believe it's gotta be published once a week for three consecutive weeks before the public hearing. If that was gonna be on the nineteenth, I guess the newspaper publishes, there's an option for a Sunday, a Friday, and a Wednesday. So saying, taking the latest, if you started the publication on the third Sunday, which is a Sunday, you could get three publications in. Or even maybe a little bit earlier on that, um, October first, or even the twenty-ninth, for that matter.
Well, if we start publishing on the twenty-ninth, we could publish on, we could publish on the twenty-ninth, the sixth, and the thirteenth, have the public hearing on the nineteenth.
That would, that's correct.
And then vote on the twenty-sixth of October.
I have a question for Ms. Pico, please.
Ms. Rich?
There, there was elaborate discussion about the process where citizens, if they were opposed to something happening, based on, one was considered, what were the two terms we used for if it went to the Board of Adjustment instead of coming to the council for appeal? There were certain uses of property, and the council, I, I'll speak for myself, believed that a lot of this should come to, to council, so that they do not have to go up to the Board of Adjustment and hire an attorney for an appeal, that the appeal would be heard before this body. Are your red line changes doing that?
Let me first say that the ordinance is in the council's hands at this point.
Right.
And based on the comments that we've received thus far, we, we have no objections to what we receive. When we get into the nuances of what is deemed a special exception versus what is deemed a conditional use, we would look for guidance from the council on making those modifications.
And wouldn't that have to be advertised as part of the code?
Yes.
And it's not in place now, correct?
Uh, it's not in place now, but I think based on the commentary that I heard, again, I believe that there's sufficient time for us to get into the nuances of that conversation, and so that we can understand what direction you wanna move in. That, that's my, my, my feeling and my belief on that.
I, I'd rather wait to call till we saw what that looked like. That's my preference.
Another council member? Ms. Gregory?
No questions, other than we're just really trying to make that October nineteenth public hearing correct.
Correct.
That's what you're, what you're pushing for.
Anything from the administration?
From the administration's standpoint, we would ask that you all proceed with the public hearing. The edits that Ms. Rich is, um, referring to are agreeable to the administration, so we will be submitting those red line copies in the interim.
But, and do we have this in our mailbox now? Like, we're calling for something we haven't read.
You're only setting a date for a public hearing, but before we go to advertising, you will have all of these edits that have currently been asked of the administration. They will be submitted to.
I, I've never participated in something like this for planning codes.
Chief, when you think that possible that those, the red line will be available to send out to the council, or another copy of can be sent out to the council?
You know, I'll, um, I mean, the current version is ready. The one that Ms. Rich is referring to is the one that we're looking for a little bit more guidance on.
That's why we were meeting.
But we can, but we can certainly make our initial run at those edits, and we can have that submitted to you probably tomorrow.
Okay.
Why would we call anything then?
Mr. Vice President?
Hold on, Mr., are you finished, Ms. Gregory?
Yeah, I, I think the main holdup, the last meeting we had, were just those dealing with the Board of Adjustment and zoning board, that Shayla knows, knew about, and I think that's what she's referring to, some of the concerns. So I'm, I'm guessing that's, that's what we will see when we get the red line version to incorporate some of those.
That is correct, by, by the end of the week, if you're talking about all of those changes, Ms. Gregory?
Well, well, I know that there were some specific...
Right.
Ones, not, not the entire thing necessarily, but some specific ones.
And, and, and this is what I'll tell you, just so that we're, what we're asking, there were, there was Cs and S's, the conditional use versus special exception, there were the maps and the definitions, and so that last part of being able to make those changes, we'll get those red lines to you. If you hold this over a week, you'll have it before you even start editing and looking at it. This is just so that we can stay on schedule.
Yeah, just get it on the agenda, yeah.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't be voting until October the twenty-ninth, and the council, as, as Ms. Pico said, it's in your hands. If there are other changes you want to make or need us to make, we willingly accept and, and ask, but we're just starting the process.
Mr. Daze?
I, I think, I think, uh, citizens need to understand that this is a very complicated process, and there are certain things that have to happen in a certain sequence in order for them to happen. And, and there's never going to be a perfect lineup, and there're gonna have to be some steps taken in order to get everything lined up that, that, you know, that are the best we can do at, at any one particular time. And so I think, I think this, what this process we're talking about now, where we have the committee meeting, we've already planned for September twenty-eighth, Vice President Small has suggested that on that morning, we have our regular council meeting within recess, we have the committee meeting, we see if anything comes out of that. We will have had, by that time, we will have had this redlined markup for two weeks, if, if you can get it to it, get it to us, get it to us fairly quickly. But, but we, in any event, we will have had it for an extended period of time. And then, and then we can, after we have our committee meeting, we can reconvene, hopefully we will come to an agreement on something that can then be advertised, beginning on September twenty-ninth, advertised again on the sixth of October and thirteenth of October. We have a public hearing on the nineteenth of October, and hopefully we can vote on October twenty-sixth. There may be some hiccups along the way, but this is as good a plan as we can come up with right now.
But you're asking the council to call a public hearing on a document they've not seen? I've, I've never participated in this.
We're not calling for the hearing until September twenty-ninth.
But you're, but you're doing this as a legislative act today. You're asking, am I, do I have that wrong?
Let me, let me clarify something, Mr. Chair. What we're doing is asking you to call for a public hearing on the UDC. It is on the agenda. We all know and agree that there may be changes, and that, that's fine, that's the process. So to the extent it's on the schedule, I mean, on the agenda now, you're calling for the public hearing for the document as it exists, but we know, and you know, there're going to be changes. In fact, there's some changes we probably hadn't even contemplated yet, but so that we can continue the process and make those changes, and still have the time to do everything you all wanna do without rushing you all, that we, what we don't wanna do is, is get you right up to the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth and have to make a bunch of changes, rather than listening to you all throughout the three-year process and saying, these are changes you need to make. You all asked us to make changes and add the maps, we're doing that. You all asked us to make changes to add the definitions, we're doing that. You all have asked us to go through the Cs and S's to make sure that neighborhoods keep their integrity. We're going to go through that process as well. And so the document before you is the one on the agenda, but the changes that we're talking about, you don't have to wait until the twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth to make them. We can make them beforehand.
That's when we should call the hearing, when we see the changes.
I agree with Beth.
Yeah, we, I mean, the UDC is something we just not start talking about, we've been talking about this for a while, and actually have several meetings, you know, with the administration, and also with our attorney. You know, and again, it's, it's, it's nothing new before us, and again, our attorney did agree, if there's some major changes that need to be done, you know, we can just, pretty much just do it on the twenty-eighth, you know, so I mean, it's not like, you know, it's really something that we have not seen before. So therefore, I think we just go, should go ahead and move on to the next agenda item.
What will be advertised on the twenty-ninth, what will be advertised on the twenty-ninth for the public hearing on October nineteenth, will be the document that, that has incorporated, that already has incorporated all these changes we're talking about, plus anything that comes out of the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
That is correct, Ms., that is correct, Mr. Chairman, and also, what we're asking is for you all to do this. Call, add the public hearing, the call for the public hearing today, wait until next week to call for it, and hold the UDC over for a week. That way, we will have the substantive changes to you before the end of the week, and you will have the majority of the changes that you're looking at by then. So if you add the public hearing to the agenda today, hold it over a week, and hold UDC over for a week, then we will be able to have this conversation with red lines in hand and boxes, and then you've also started the process.
So we're, so now you're suggesting that we go ahead and add the call to the agenda today, let it lay over one week, and then vote on the call next week, by which time you will have delivered the red line version to us?
Correct, exactly.
Okay.
Another council members? Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice President, so what you're proposing is that by the time we have the actual public hearing, then we would, we would have been furnished the red line version by then.
Well before that date. Well, well before that date, so...
Within the next week.
And if you have other changes, we can make those too, but what will be advertised is what we want to be able to say, this is what the council was put up before us. That's what we're asking. So next week, you would just be calling for the public hearing and holding UDC over so that you could make the changes in a public setting, in a public meeting, the ones that we've talked about, the maps, the Cs and S's, along with the definitions.
We don't intend to have a public hearing next week. We just calling for the public hearing.
Exactly, exactly. We're just calling for the public hearing. That won't take, public hearing won't take place until October nineteenth. You have more than a month to make all the changes that you wanna make.
Another council members?
Wait, when will it start being advertised? When we call it next week?
September twenty-ninth.
So how is there time to make changes if we're calling it next week and then it gets advertised a couple of days later?
Well, the advertisement in this case is a little bit different than just a normal zoning change that we normally do.
Huge.
Where you publish the whole thing.
Exactly.
You can't publish this whole thing, it's, it'd be ridiculous.
Right.
But, but you can do a synopsis version. So, but at that time, when it goes to publication, I think it needs to be in whatever the final horn's gonna be.
Correct.
And if that's agreed on the twenty-eighth, then you can start your publication on the twenty-ninth. However, you do need to remember that the newspapers have deadlines, and the ad is gonna have to be teed up and ready to go, um, you know, like, you can't just send it to them at five o'clock on the twenty-eighth and expect it to be published the next day.
Right, and our meeting is that...
They need forty-eight hours, I think, but it could be teed up, I think.
How can it be teed up if we haven't met with our attorney that's representing our offices for this planning code?
Well, you're, like I said, you're not publishing the actual ordinance, you're publishing, uh, kind of a synopsis.
And, and Mr. Aldis is correct. So we would have, remember, the, the UDC attorney for the council has produced a thirty-nine-page document talking about different substantive changes. What we've heard from the council are the changes that you all wanna make. We know we're gonna make those changes, we'll get you the red line. If there are other issues before we even get to next week, we're just asking you all let us know. Once we get to next week, if there are issues and changes you all need to make then, go ahead and make them. If we move past that week, if your changes that you need to make, let us know, and we will still be able to go ahead and start the advertising. We advertise, starts on Wednesday, it's typically, legal advertisements are on the Wednesday, you push those, put those in there. And so remember, a lot of the changes that we're talking about have already been made, and so we'll get you the red line. If there's some objection, then you all just stop. I mean, the, you're not, you're not doing anything that would stop your process, other than making sure we stay on the timeline to get an October twenty-ninth vote.
We're putting into motion an, an entire change to the way we have process and protocol and laws for zoning. There was a huge lawsuit over one isolated item for advertising incorrectly. Why, why would anyone wanna go off doing something that could perhaps become nothing but a big lawsuit at the end of the day because it wasn't advertised appropriately? And it does appear as though you're rushing it, because if you're saying that we're gonna have this meeting on the twenty-eighth, which our chair is not, our president's not here, but he asked all the parties, is this a good date? I imagine it, it rose to the occasion that it is, because it's hard to get everyone together, but I, I just, I don't understand how you could take what is the essence of quality of life, which is your land use codes, and, and, and then do it so that everyone is rushing around at the last minute to advertise it appropriately.
So I would say these things. One, that's one of the reasons that we're asking you all to start before the twenty-eighth, and so that you can have time to discuss these things in public meetings on a regular process, and, and many of you all know, this council has done a really good job of going back and forth with us in the last three years on what we want. So three and a half years of working through this process, making sure we do the things we need to do, making sure that we advertise. Mr. Aldis is absolutely correct when he said we're going to make sure we put out a synopsis, and understand that the document you're looking at now is the document that's been before you for quite some time, and the thirty-nine-page report that we have is probably one of three that will be produced, one by the administration, and then probably another. Any changes you all wanna make, just let us know what those changes are, we'll do it in a very public fashion, we'll push it out, we'll make sure it stays on the agenda so that you all can have open discussions about it. All we're asking today is that you push the, push it to next week and call for the public hearing next week.
Another council members? Madam Clerk?
Consent resolutions held over, forty-five-three-zero, declare the structure at twenty-seven-seventy-five Spring Hill Avenue a public nuisance and order it demolished.
This was a holdover, do we have an update? Someone's singing.
Ms. Anton? Thank you.
Good morning, yes, we, we have an update for this, this item, agenda item. It's twenty-seven-seventy-five Spring Hill Avenue, it has a cross street of New Shiloh Avenue. If you recall, this was held over approximately sixty days, and the reason for the holdover was the owner's representative, the owner is listed as Mims, M-Y-M-S Incorporated, their representative came down to the public hearing and expressed the desire...
Could you speak up, please, Mr. Dolphin Ball?
Sure. And they expressed the desire to renovate this building.
Right.
But the owner suggested that he needed six to eight months to submit a package, have his architects, engineers submit a package. The problem that we ran into is the nuisance abatement action, the city requires the city... requires the city council to have a determination within 120 days from when we send out our notice. So we have a timeline, which was the 60 days. We held it over, or the council held it over, the maximum amount to allow for a decision to be made. And that's why we're back here today. Now, the condition of the building still stands. The structural defects with the roofing components, the exterior wall, um, are still present. And you see that, that some of the doors are open. The overhang over the front sidewalk along Spring Hill Avenue is still deteriorated. Which municipal enforcement is still asking the city council to make the decision to declare it a public nuisance and order the demolition. Um, this will still give the owner time, because there's a 10-day appeal period the owner has the right to, to engage in. But it also gives the owner time, because we have to serve a second notice on the property, record that notice, the council's decision, the declaration. And then we have to serve notice to utility companies to make sure that the utilities, all the utilities are disconnected. Um, have the Mobile County Health Department, uh, serve some insecticide to have, uh, the, on the structure before the demolition. And then we have to go through the bid process. So there is time for the owner to follow up, if their intention is to renovate, to get the proper drawings and submit them, uh, before the city would be in a position for a demolition.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Richardson?
I'm, I'm going to recommend that we act on this today. This property is in a prime section of, uh, the Craigton community. It's right in front of a bank. It's, it's, uh, the post office is, is a few feet from that. In other words, it's maximum amount of traffic coming by there. And it's, it is an eyesore. It just, it just left on its own. Uh, so if they haven't acted in all of this time, have not done anything to abate the issues that's going on over there, I think we need to do what we need to do. And then, in the ensuing time, if they figure out a way to come and fix it, let them do that.
Madam Clerk?
Resolutions held over, 03584 and 585, are reappointing Carlos Finley and Robert Adams Bucky Thomas as part-time, um, judges of the Mobile Municipal Court, 096...
Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
That's 60 days? How about 60 days? That'd be middle of November.
Do they continue in the placement?
Yes.
So it's not like we left it hanging? Okay.
09617, allocate monies from citywide signal innovation and assessment to bridge painting Broad Street.
Move to table.
And we've been asked to table this.
Table.
Table.
Okay.
08728, approve purchase order to Frederick's Custom Manufacturing to repair 485 street barricades for Traffic Engineering Department. 08729, approve purchase order to CDW Government, Government for 551-year Microsoft Office Software Subscriptions. 08730, approve purchase order to Federal Resources Supply for portable EOD X-ray system for, um, MPD. 08731, approve purchase order to Temple for pedestrian signal central control units and signal push-button stations for Electrical Department. 08732, approve purchase order to Sunbelt Fire for breathing apparatus, rechargeable batteries, charging stations, and accessories. 08733, approve purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for two Chevrolet Traverse SUVs. 09734, adopt the 2021-2022 General Fund Capital Improvements Fund and Convention Center Fund budgets.
What are we doing there?
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
No, I was gonna ask, uh, I would appreciate having my list of capital improvement for the CIP for District 6. And, um, the others, well, you know, I'll vote my conscience, as they say. But on that one, I, I haven't seen it in its final.
Ms. Gregory?
Yeah, what she's asking about is something I think we've talked about. It's just a breakdown of the projects uh, that are in CIP in particular, just so that we have them all kind of line itemed.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that to you. I, I thought those had already been sent out to you all, but we'll make sure we get you the latest, the, the normal spreadsheet that we send you.
Right.
Yep.
Yep, for, for the upcoming fiscal year.
Correct.
Projects in each district for the upcoming fiscal year.
Correct. Yep, we've got that.
All right, good.
Uh, Councilor Day, President had tasked and asked if we could lay this over for another week? I mean, uh, pretty much is vote your conscience on that, but that's what he had to ask.
So we're laying this over another week?
Yeah. They're gonna have to take a vote, or you just ask. So we just go, we'll take that up at 10:30.
Okay, so I'll take that separately. 21735, authorize contract with Fuse Kitchen for Azalea City Golf Course Food Concession Services. 47736, assent to the vacation of an alley in Hillwood Park. Um, if we could go back to public hearings, um, this public hearing was left off of the agenda accidentally. Uh, it's a public hearing to vacate Osprey and Yegret, is that it?
To do what? I'm sorry, get here.
Osprey and, and Yegret, Osprey Lane.
Osprey Lane.
It's in District 3.
Okay. So that's a public hearing, you said?
Yes.
It was called for, just, uh, got admitted.
Oh, I see, okay.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64032, is a rezoning of property on Spring Hill Avenue from B2 and B3 to B3. 02033, adopt the City of Mobile Organizational Chart. Consent resolutions being introduced. 31740, authorized grant application to U.S. Small Business Administration for supplemental funding in support of shuttered venue operators grant previously awarded to the Sanger Theater, $491,743.50, no match. 60741, 742, 743, 744, are approval awards of special bonuses to public services employees, firefighter of the month, Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month, and Public Works at Large Employee of the Month. 60745, 746, 747, 748, are determining appropriations to Lily B. Williamson High School, Regency Park Homeowners Association, Charlotte Oaks Homeowners Association, Child Advocacy Center, Serve a Public Purpose, and authorizing payment. 27772, appoint election officials for municipal runoff election on October 5th. Resolutions being introduced, 08749, approve purchase order to Delta Designs for 33 custom shelving units for Mobile Museum of Art, $27,511. 08750, approve purchase order to Communications International for 196 portable radios, $256,816.72. 08751, approve purchase order to Ferno Washington for two ambulance stretchers, $45,466.56. 08752, approve purchase order to J&amp;A Contracting for 43 concrete pads for traffic signal emergency generators, $29,885. 08753, approve purchase order to B.C. Fabrication for 55 aluminum boxes for traffic signal emergency generators, $23,375. 08754, approve purchase order to truck equipment sales for dump truck chassis with landscape body for Parks uh, Maintenance, $61,375. 08755, approve purchase order to Coblenz Equipment and Parts for 30-foot boom slope mower for motor pool, $193,620. 08756, approve purchase order to Sand Some Equipment for garbage, garbage truck for Parks Maintenance, $149,913. 08757, approve purchase order to Vulcan Inc. for 1,000 stock aluminum streaked signs and brackets, $30,123. 08758, approve purchase order to Emergency Equipment Professional for Demers Crestline Ambulance for GM chassis for Fire Administration, $170,223.42. 08759, approve purchase order to Emergency Equipment for Demers Crestline Ambulance for, for chassis Fire Administration, $180,536.47. 09760, authorize to transfer funds from Historic Development's operating budget to their grant fund for grant match, $10,761.71. 21761, authorize contract with Jay Payne Organization for Roof Installation Improvements, Taylor Park Community Center, $119,320. 21762, authorize contract with Isaiah Engineering for mechanical upgrades at the Arthur R. Outlaw Convention Center, $91,840. 21763, authorize contract with E. Cornell Malone Corporation for Gymnasium Roof Recovering, Azalea Road Complex, $97,134. 21764...
Hold on. Ms. Richardson?
Somebody talk about 21763.
What's, what's the question? I mean, what, what do you, what would you like to know?
Okay. Azalea Road Complex.
Gymnasium... I'm sorry?
City took it over.
Okay.
Got soccer outside, I think, is big.
I didn't know where it was, okay. All right.
21764, authorize contract with Chris Brewer Contracting for Woodlawn Apartments, Asbestos Abatement and Demolition, $1050 Dolphin Island Parkway.
Uh, Ms., uh, Lambert, okay, Mr. David Talkenbach, can you come down? And, uh, hold on a second. Talk about this, uh, particular item. If you all recall, you know, trying to see, uh, about a couple of months ago, the owner had came down and approached the, uh, council um, about trying to hold up, uh, off these apartments. And these apartments have been, uh, you know, eyesore for several years. And, uh, it cost them, you know, thousands of, of dollars and et cetera. And, um, and Mr. Doggenbach, you can just explain to us exactly, you know, what we're looking at and everything, and, um, and why it costs so much?
And, yes, and, and everybody will remember that this project has already been declared a public nuisance by city council. And now we've progressed to the point where we have a contract to move forward with the demolition of these structures. And, and the location, well, the, the project name is Woodland Apartments, and it's located off of Dolphin Island Parkway with a cross street of Hertel, just south of Hertel. And these units, um, have been neglected, like, um, Mr. Small has mentioned, for several years. And if you also recall, Mr. Smallwell, that there's some illegal dumping going on in addition to the structures, which includes scrap tires. There's a very large mound of scrap tires at this location that will be abated as well with this contract. But what we're looking at is 45 buildings on four separate parcels. Forty-two of these are single-family residential structures, uh, that were used as apartments. And three of these are two-story buildings. And this count includes the maintenance facility and the laundry facility. We're, we're looking at, uh, moving forward as, as soon as we can, and we would like the council to approve the contract.
It's so, is, this contract is four to five buildings?
Uh, no, that's $448,750.
No, the, the buildings, the units. How many units?
Oh, a, a total was, uh, 45 units.
Forty-five units?
Yes.
But that's not all the units that's on that piece of property, correct?
That is correct. There are some in the back that have been renovated by the owner, and some in the front that are still occupied that are not part of this project.
So the cost, I guess the lien would just go on this particular property until he, you know, he gets ready to sell it, or? The cost of the demolition?
Uh, it's, right. Assuming that the council approves the contract and the city moves forward with the demolition, all costs associated with this project will come back to the city council to be fixed as an invoice or bill to the, to the owner. If the owner does not pay them, the city has the ability to file a lien against the property. And subsequently, down the road, if that lien is not satisfied, the municipal, uh, we have a municipal lien foreclosure act that we can pursue on the backend. But right now, definitely, we, we would request the, the council to move forward with approving the contract. Um, but to follow up with Mr. Small, some of the costs are gonna be not only the demolition costs of the contractor, but we do have additional costs of professional services. Architects and engineers that have drawn plans for us to get to this point to move forward. So, and there will be, the fixed costs will be higher than what you see here with this contract, in addition to any administrative fees that would be tagged on at the end of the project.
Ms. Rich, and then Mr. Days?
Yes. Where is this, um, almost half million coming from?
Currently, municipal enforcement has a capital account that is scheduled for demolitions. That is where the money's going to be coming from.
And, and also the money for the soft costs, like engineering, you said, and architectural?
Yes.
And this was an owner that came down and asked us not to do this?
The, the owner did come down and, and requested that some of the buildings not be demolished, that he wanted to renovate them. However, at, at this point, those structures in the municipal enforcement's position are structurally deficient. And we, I, I suggest that we move forward. Now, the owner and I had a chance to discuss as we left, and I, I suggested to him that, hey, some of your existing buildings that you did renovate, that are occupied towards the rear of the development, that you may want to focus on renovating those, because they're now becoming dilapidated and vacant. And I believe that's what his, his opinion was, that yes, hey, I'm, I'm not gonna fight this action, this demolition action, but I will focus on those buildings.
And he was aware, is he made aware that it's this much?
At this point, I do not know specifically if he's aware that it's gonna be this contract amount. Um, but it was an open bid, open...
Sure. No, I understand that part. I, I just didn't...
Mr. Day, have passed. Mr. Williams?
To answer your question, this is a unique project. That yes, on the total apartment complex development, there are some occupied structures. However, that is not in the project scope that we have here.
So, Mr. Small? I, I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Williams, but I did want to ask this question.
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to make sure Mr. Williams was finished. Oh, so... So the answer is, his question is yes. We, unique project, but do we, have we done this before? Have we gone onto private property to tear down something that's a nuisance? Yes, we, we, we do it all the time. This is just much larger scale. And it, so, and, and the only way we're able to do it is when the council makes a declaration that it is a nuisance, which you all have already done.
What's the value of the property? Do we know?
Miss...
Hold on, Mr. Richardson.
It's gonna be worth at least a half a million.
Mr. Williams, you finished?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
I would like to say that I have streets after streets where the city has come in and demolished all of the houses. So now we're talking about Mr. Big. But Mr. Little, we've been knocking those houses down for years, years. Seems like we have... Seems like we have gone on to the property of Mr. Big now. We're taking Mr. Big apartments out. But the little people down there, we knock them out every day. Private property.
Yeah. Mr. Williams?
I just want to clarify what my thought is, and that is, here is a operation, and what it can appear to be, is that guy comes to us and says, hey, man, I have no way I can afford to take these buildings down. In order for me to have a good operation, I need the city to come in with a half million dollars, do me a little favor. Now, when this all runs down, this all runs down again, there's going to be a half million dollar lien on this property, and nobody's ever going to buy that piece of property. And we're going to be back in there tearing down the rest of the properties, the rest of the units, at some point. And there's going to be a half a million dollars out there that we're never going to recover, and have no chance of ever recovering. That's my thought now.
Yeah.
I doubt that, Mr. Williams. The piece of property that we're looking at or talking about right now is, will be valuable, especially in the future. The property is right across the street from Bishop State Community College, where Alabama Powers is now teaching the students how to climb poles and et cetera. And that's actually, and that event center is about to get ready to be located right next door to this property. If you remember, when the owner had came down here, he was pleading his case, and I said, you know, sir, I said, you know, there's an event center, you know, right next door that's just trying to open up. She's crying about, you know, you do something with that piece of property. And he would say, well, I sold the property to her. Well, I said, well, you know exactly who I'm talking to. So this lady, Miss C.C. Calhoun, about to get ready to open up, put thousands or millions of dollars into this building with this stuff next door, you know, to her. And on top of that, week after week after week, you have citizens coming and calling, emailing, you know, asking me about this piece of property. Matter of fact, went to Walmart one night, mask up, hat on, thought I was hiding, and couldn't hide. First, and Mr. Small, again, about this piece of property and everything. This property is actually, is valuable. If I'm not mistaken, I think I even bag up to a creek, if I'm not mistaken. But that piece of property will be, is valuable. And matter of fact, I mean, we're looking for land now, you know, for, to build more affordable homes in District 3 and East Side of 65. And that's a particular, great piece of property that would be a great place to put affordable home, if it comes down to that. So I would not, I would not agree with you on that statement, but I believe that the city will recruit their money from that particular area one way or another. Okay? And other council members? And I thank you, Mr. Dockenbach.
But this wouldn't be let go today, it's the first read, correct?
Yes, first read.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
21765, authorized contract with Emerald Coast Utilities Authority for processing of recyclables.
Can we get some more details on that?
Well, my question was, are they back up and running?
No, not yet. Not yet, but the contract's set to expire at the end of this month, and this is for a one-year extent, you know, contract with them, with option years.
Do we pay them even when we're not able to take our recyclables over there?
Right, because ultimately, they're going to open up, it could be, we're hearing right now, it could be the middle of October, is what we're hearing, which is only two weeks after this would be set to expire. So we have to renew a contract somewhere to be able to take our recyclables. This is currently the best and only option that we have, or it's the best option we have to take them to. We're doing a one-year contract so that we can explore other options in the future.
Now, what I was wondering is if we can't take them there, we're still paying for them, even though we can't take our recyclables there?
No, we're only paying, no, this is just to have the contract in place. We only pay if we actually take stuff there.
Okay, all right.
And this doesn't call, include hauling it? It's 25K. What are you, like, reserving space with that amount? Because it, doesn't it cost money per ton?
Correct.
And that's not in this amount?
Correct.
And how much do they charge for that now?
It's a separate, I'll get the, I don't know what the-
Fifteen dollars a ton.
Fifteen dollars a ton.
And this is the first read, but it's, okay, we probably need some more details on Thank you.
And I think the draft contact, contract should be, or the contract should be in the agenda.
Right, but it doesn't include the cost to transfer.
For the haul, correct.
And other council members?
I mean, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars, if I remember correctly, that part of it.
Pay 316 dollars alone, take it to the-
So what is the, what is exactly is the 25K for? I'm not following this. Because wouldn't you renew a contract based on how much they would charge? Because how do you know they're not going to go up?
Well, this lock's ended at 15 dollars, it's based on historical numbers.
I see.
It's a 50% maximum for a contract level.
Finish, Ms. Rich. And other council members? Madam Clerk?
25766, accept permanent sidewalk easement at Unity Park for use in Broad Street Redevelopment Project to create ADA sidewalks. 31767, update the ARP for utility and rental assistance. 35768, recommend the lease-
Wait, let's go back to that one again, the updating. What are we updating there? And-
Maybe I can talk about there, I don't know.
So this is just the follow-up to the funding allocation you guys did with the three and a half million dollars for rental and utility assistance? We did the RFP, we've scored them out, and the three groups supplied, and we're trying to fund the three groups.
Okay. Did you, did we send paperwork to Washington already for the buckets or whatever they wanted? We were supposed to get copies of that, what was sent up.
The report required by Montgomery by August 31st, I think, is the one you were, it was all expenditures through January 31st of 2021, and we had no expenditure. So it actually went up, but it went up with zeros because the city council didn't pass the allocations until-
Right, but I thought you had to present where you're, how much you were putting in each bucket as the first report.
When the initial guidelines came out, that was our understanding, but when the actual portal opened up, it asked for the actual expenditures, not the allocations. And we didn't have any, these are the first expenditures that we're actually awarding besides premium pay. So the report went up, and we'll be glad to get it to you, but it's all zeros because it was as of July 31st.
Right, well, that's not what we had heard publicly, though. We were told basically that it was to be the buckets.
Treasury Department's literally writing the rules as we go, is what's happening.
That's right. It keeps changing on us.
I understand, but I appreciate, you know, just being in the loop, I guess, while I'm still here. And these are programs that now are ready to go because they've been approved through the administration?
Yes, and these are the three groups we're looking at funding would be Housing First for rental and utility assistance, Mobile Community Action for rental and utility assistance, and then Legal Services for rental assistance. The contract is still being drafted because Treasury's not really gotten any sign-offs for us on the legal terminology, but we've got a draft working on with the administrations.
Are you prohibited, like, for administration of these things? How much goes towards the administration of getting this funding to the right place?
With the nonprofit or with the city?
Yeah, like, what are the guidelines? Like, you have-
The city's using HUD-funded staff because these are also-
Okay.
The cities are self-imposing on the nonprofits and the third tier balance, drag it much.
Right, and so, do you have a percentage that, yeah? No more for that, for their administration? Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Jamie, before you leave, since this is moving forward, how long will it be before we can put out information to our residents so that they can apply? And how will we get the applications to them? Do we set up meetings? Because they're always asking, you know, how do I apply? To make it as easy as possible?
Sorry about first of October.
First of October?
But it's sometimes by contract language, it's basically traded.
Okay, so we'll be able to put out information to them, telling them specifically, this is what you do if you would like to apply for rental assistance?
They do apply directly to the nonprofit.
Oh, they'll go to the nonprofits?
And, you know, they call us, we'll prefer nonprofit.
Okay, so I guess we need to try to work with these nonprofits as well, to maybe come into our districts to make it more-
We're working out our way on the contract with their intake system, talking about difficult intake system, which is the county department, Department of City or New York City, they have signed that, so you can back from.
Okay, well, we'll just work together to try to make it happen. Thank you.
Ms. Vice President?
Ms. Richardson?
Since those impacted would basically be the lower of our income citizens, is it possible that whatever application that they are required to fill out, that those applications can be made available in our libraries and in our community centers? So it would be easy, accessible to those people who need it the most?
I'll talk to nonprofits about that. It'd be up to them to decide how to do the intake. That's one of the reasons, though, that we did select multiple groups, so there's multiple intake points.
Okay, but that would be most helpful.
I'll talk to them.
And we could get the biggest bank of the issue. People don't know where they're prior, what to do, but if we could make, if we can make the applications available in our public centers, it would really be good.
35768, recommend the lease of a portion of city-owned property at 200 Government Street for the USA Center for Intermodal Transportation and Logistics.
What is that?
Bringing USA downtown?
I know. I'm just kidding. Is anyone here?
But I spoke because I'm a USA graduate.
Sounds like it's a good project.
47769, vacate two public streets known as Osprey Lane and Yegre Crossing. 60770, authorize MPD's participation in the fiscal year 2022 Community Traffic Safety Program. 01771, authorized purchase agreement with Northeast Consortium for Engineering Education for two parcels along Three Mile Creek, for the Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail, $206,000.
Engineering education. Just what is that? Is that me?
That's just, that's just the name of the company that owns the land.
Oh, okay. I didn't have a comment. And then, Mr. Chairman, if you will, I did tell Mr. Dockenbach I was going to do this after, I think you saw the text. 196 portables, is that replacing portables we already have, or are we entering new systems?
These are, those are new, those are new generators. You're talking about the portable generators?
Uh-uh.
Sorry.
Radios.
Oh, the radios? Yeah, sorry, 196. Those are replacing the ones that we've had, the ones we've been using for the last, I don't know how long.
It's just a replacement.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, so.
That's right.
What is the traffic safety? I'm sorry I didn't jump into that. Do we know about that? Community Traffic Safety Program, what that involves?
That's the last one, MPD sponsoring, and that's just every year, this time of year, we ramp up with grants that will assist with traffic safety, bringing awareness to the community during the holiday season, traffic rights.
Thank you.
Did you all decide to wait until next week for this call for public hearing? Or are we adding it today?
I'm in favor of adding it today. She says, do we want, do we want to add the call for public hearing today so that it would hold over one week, and then we could vote on it next week?
Yeah, we're just asking that you add it today as a first read and let it lay over to next week.
Well, it's a call for public hearing.
Right.
You still lay it over.
Just sort of like notice what the plan is.
That doesn't make sense. I've never done it like this. We pick the date, we call it. We don't call something. A call for a public hearing is an automatic consent.
Right, and we just, you know, we advertise it.
So I'm not there yet till I see what it is we're calling. Just, I mean, I think I made that clear, but I might be the only outlier on that.
What'd you say, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry.
When we call for a public, you know, under calling for a public hearing, this is automatically a consent resolution, and it's, we advertise it, we send it to advertise it.
It's not, it's not subject to consent, and we probably never do.
Right. But that's the date you select.
Yeah, it has a date certain on it, so...
We're going to call for a public hearing on October 19.
Add it and then hold it up.
Yeah, right.
No, you're calling for it. You don't have a choice to hold it up and vote next week, once you've seen what it is you're calling for.
I mean, we're just adding it on the agenda, and then when I call it out, y'all can say lay it over.
Yeah, it's like anything else. We can hold anything over we want to.
Chris, if that's fine?
It's not subject to consent. The clerk's issue is, it's not subject to consent, so it's not subject to the rules of the council. So in order to hold it over, if we were to add it, it would have to be a vote of the law.
Right, right.
Can we hear from our attorney?
You can do it either way. You can add it today and hold it over to next week, or you can just add it for next week. If you add it today, you just need the consent of the, I guess, acting president and two council members.
Okay.
To add it. But you don't have to vote to approve it today, that's true.
Can we just put it on next week?
Yes.
You can do that, too.
Yeah, let's just put it on that.
That would be protocol.
We can do it next week. If that makes it easier for you all, happy to do it that way.
It'd be nice to know what you are approving.
Yes, put it on next week.
Put it on the agenda for next week.
I will ask the council, too, if any questions concerned, please contact, you know, our attorney that we hired for this. It's one of Cochran, and also have, you know, communication with the administrations so we can get as much out before next week, okay? Anything from the council? Anything from the administration? If not, we'll see each other at 10:30.
We still don't, we still don't have our CIP list.
Don't have one?
Are we going to get Bob? Bobby?
He is, don't. Why are you waiting on him? What's up, Dave? What's up, Dave? What's up, Dave?